So, redistricting. What is it and why are you going to enjoy it so much? Federal law is what drives the need to redistrict. The courts have determined that legislative bodies who have single-member districts must have single-member districts of approximately equal population. The idea is that a vote needs to count about the same in every district. And so after every census, you look again at your existing districts, drop in the new census population figures for those districts, and determine whether or not they are within the court allowed, basically 10 percent. The idea behind the 10 percent rule, it's not an absolute protection, but it's been good for over 40 years, except in a few isolated instances. How you measure the 10 percent is to look at the most populous of your districts and compare it to the least populous of your districts. And if the difference is bigger than 10 percent, we call that the overall deviation. I'll explain it in a second. You need to redistrict. Now, of course, lawyers have touched this, so it's not actually that simple. What we do instead is for every district, define an ideal size. And the ideal size is your total population divided by the number of districts, so that if every district had the ideal size, then everybody would be exactly equal in population. And we compare the most populous district to that ideal size and ask how much it departs from that ideal size as a percentage of that ideal size. And we do the same thing for the least populous district and add those two departures together. If they are bigger than 10 percent, you need to redistrict. So, a way to think about the ideal size is that it's kind of a target size for each of your districts. You don't have to actually achieve the ideal size. The 10 percent rule says you've got a little play, a little variation that can be tolerated. It's not a whole lot. It's under 10 percent on top of up. But a good way of thinking about what you're doing when you're drawing new districts is to try to aim for plus or minus 5 percent compared to the ideal size, so that you're close to the ideal size, but not necessarily right on it. There are, in addition, two other legal constraints that you have to pay attention to while you try to satisfy the legal requirement of equal population. And the first of those is the Voting Rights Act. In particular, Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act is the section that forbids discrimination against protected minority groups. Typical kinds of redistricting violations of Section 2 are called packing and cracking. Cracking is also sometimes called fracturing. The idea is the same. The idea of cracking is that you have a geographically, say, compact community of, for instance, Hispanics, and there are enough to draw a majority district, a majority Hispanic district, which is put them up, so that neither of the districts that you put those populations in are strong enough to be a majority. That's cracking, and it sometimes, not always, can violate Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act. The opposite of that is packing, and that's a situation where, idealized hypothetically, you've got enough Hispanic population to make two majority districts, but you pack some part of that second district's worth of population into the first district and make a really strong single district, but only one instead of two. So that's packing. And again, it can violate Section 2 of the Voting Rights Act under certain circumstances. There are circumstances where those kinds of things inadvertently done don't violate the act, because it depends on how the population is distributed. You may not, in fact, be able to draw two majority districts, because the Hispanic population is concentrated in one place and in a distant place, and there's not enough in the distant place to constitute a majority. And the reason that you can't just gerrymander and gather everybody up is the third limit. It comes from a line of cases started in 1993 by the U.S. Supreme Court in a case called Shaw versus Reno. And it, and the cases that followed after it, developed the idea that you cannot make race the predominant factor in your redistricting, except under very limited circumstances. And that circumstance test has got two parts. The first part is, do you have what the courts call a compelling state interest? Fancy way of saying legitimate government interest that's very strong. For instance, not violating Section 2. Courts had explicitly held that meeting Section 2 requirements, avoiding violation, satisfies that problem as being a compelling state interest. Then, they established that you have a legitimate reason to consider race as predominant factor in drawing, for instance, A district. The next question is, did what you do, was it narrowly tailored, court speak, for? Did you do only what you needed to do to satisfy Section 2 and didn't go overboard? And it's easier to show you a picture than to try to amplify what that actually means. This is the Shaw versus Reno test case that went to the Supreme Court. The state of North Carolina Legislature in 1992 drew the yellow district to create a majority African-American district, followed an interstate mostly across the state, and went off to either side and grabbed communities that had substantial African-American population. It was challenged to the court and made it to the Supreme Court, and they looked at it and said, "Well, there's a limit. This has gone too far." So, as a practical matter, it puts a limit on the ability to racially gerrymander. Case a little closer home, I think is maybe even a better example. In the upper left, this is the Texas Legislature's attempt to draw congressional districts in Houston in the 1990s. The red district was intended and was a majority Hispanic district, and the light green surrounding it was intended to be and was a majority African-American district in Houston. It was challenged, this map, and after a couple of failed attempts to draw other alternatives, courts always give the legislature a chance to fix. The court drew the map in the bottom right, and the red district is a majority Hispanic district, the light green is a majority African-American district, and you can see without all the gerrymandering. Now, those districts are not quite as strong African-American and Hispanic, but they're only a couple percentage points less than the hugely gerrymandered ones. So, here's a perfect visual example of can't do and could do, and we will keep that in mind when we go. A little bit of active data that we're going to get to use. The census, in addition to taking the census, defines what we call census geography over the entire United States. What they do is define little units of geography called census blocks that cover the entire country. There are millions of them. In a city, a census block, which is a whole lot typically, is a city block. In suburban or rural areas, the shapes are more irregular and the blocks can be larger. They are important, because they are the smallest unit of geography for which the Census Bureau reports data. So, what we have is a variety of data. The census headcount differentiated between all people, total population, and voting-age population, which was a headcount of everybody 18 and older. So, we have total population and voting-age population for every census block in the country. In addition, we have a breakdown of both of those. We have a breakdown of total population by race and Hispanic origin and a whole bunch of other things. We will pay attention to African-American and Hispanic primarily in a place like Houston with a sizable Asian population. We will pay attention to that, too. We also have that same racial breakdown for the voting-age population, and that's reflected in the tables that you've seen, both in the initial assessment report that you've already looked at and for the plans that we circulate, the example plans. That's what those two tables are for. Why do we care? The short answer is for balancing the population purposes, which is often referred to as one person, one vote. We will use total population. But anytime we have a voting rights question, are we violating Section 2 somehow, or are we risking it with this particular configuration, we will look at voting-age population, because that's your votes. In addition, we asked the committee to adopt criteria and guidelines. The criteria are for uniqueness in the redistricting era. Two of them, one in the very middle and the one right below it, are basically follow-the-law criteria. Balance the population and don't violate Section 2 while you're at it. The rest of them are more practical, and you can't satisfy all of them simultaneously typically, but they are common sense things, like use identifiable boundaries. Use streets, roads, rivers, creeks, something physical that everybody can see. When this first started in the 60s and 70s, in rural areas especially, sometimes the only maps people had had plaques on them, and so plaque lines were actually used, which meant sometimes a boundary line would be drawn across an open field. Not a very good idea. We don't see that very often, but we still encounter it here and there. So, use identifiable boundaries. To the extent that it's feasible, you want to not break up neighborhoods. You want to keep neighborhoods and communities of interest together to the extent you can while satisfying the other legal requirements, in particular, equal population. You have to move people around, and sometimes that means breaking up a neighborhood. We suggest paying attention to county election precincts. Use whole voting precincts as your building blocks to the extent you can. That requires that there be enough of them and that they be small enough, not tiny, but small enough. They're always bigger than blocks. That you can use them as building blocks, that there are enough of them and that they're flexible enough. Some of the problems we have with the Ector County voting precincts is that a few of them have very large numbers of people, six or seven thousand people, and so moving one of them totally changes the dynamic of the map. Fortunately, there are other election precincts that the county has drawn that are small enough to use, and in a few cases, we're going to have to split them and draw at the block level. So, VTDs is the census term, voting tabulation districts. I may slip and say that. By that, I effectively mean election precincts. The census defined not only census blocks, but VTDs in 2020. The counties who had to redistrict also had to redraw their election precincts, so the 2022 election precincts are not the same as the 2020 ones that the VTDs are based on. So, a little bit of a difference there that we have paid attention to. Other criteria, base your new plan on your existing plan. Don't erase it and draw from scratch. The voters tend to want a little bit of continuity, and continuity in their representatives that have terms extending beyond the next election. It's state law and considered appropriate practice to draw districts that are compact, not all spread out, and continuous, which means connecting. You can't have a chunk of district one over here and a different chunk unconnected over here. And finally, it is okay to consider and keep incumbents in their districts when you redraw the districts. And it's important to understand that is not your right as representatives, it's the voter's right or the voter's interest that courts have recognized in having continuity in representation. They have elected you and have some expectation that that representation is going to continue. So, we try, and no one would have succeeded in the plans we've given you in keeping each of you in your district. We also asked the committee to adopt what we call guidelines. They're guidelines for public participation, and they are really common sense. Things like if you're going to make a comment about a proposed plan or anything else to do with the redistricting process, you have to identify yourself. We'd like to have the comment in writing ultimately, even if you make it orally at a public hearing, for instance. If you're going to propose a plan, you need to propose a plan that redistricts the entire city, not just your favorite district, because there are ripple effects when you reconfigure a district. And we need to see that you've actually produced a balanced plan, by which I mean with the population distribution within that 10 percent limit. So, things like that. The committee did adopt both of those things. Here's the punchline. The benchmark is your current districts. That's the term that we've fallen into using, so whenever I refer to the benchmark, that's what I'm talking about. These are your current districts, no surprise. And these are the new population data from the current census in your existing districts. You can see in the third column, the ideal size is, of course, the same for all, although it's the total city population divided by five. And in the second column, persons, that's the headcount from the census data in each of your existing districts. And you can see that some of them are quite larger than the ideal size and some are quite a bit smaller. The next column, or label deviation, is the little exercise that I described to you. You look, for instance, at District 1 and compare the number of people, 19,000-plus, to the ideal size, nearly 23,000, and ask how many people different that is, and express it as a percentage of the ideal size. It's minus 14.24 percent. District 3 is even more underpopulated at minus 16.27 percent. 2 and 4 are both overpopulated at 22-plus percent and 24 and a half percent, respectively. So, we look at the largest overpopulated district, which is 4, and compare that to the smallest, the underpopulated district, which turns out to be District 3. Add those two departures together. If you look at the bottom left of the table, you'll see the overall deviation is 40-plus percent. Bigger than 10 percent, you get to redraw. And you're going to see these kind of tables in the next table, which is the voting-age population under the current census for your existing districts. And we care about this benchmark, because if you look at the column labeled Hispanic percentage of total voting-age population, you will see that there are three majority Hispanic districts. And when we redraw, we're going to pay attention to trying not to destroy those districts, or at least that relative strength, to the extent we can avoid it, while still adding people to the underpopulated districts and shedding people from the overpopulated districts. The next two, well, two columns over, non-Hispanic black percentage, same thing. District 1 has a 11-plus percent voting age African-American population. We're going to pay attention to trying to preserve that to the degree we can while balancing the population. So, that's the task. We will need to add territory to Districts 1, 3, and 5 in order to get their population back toward the ideal size, and we're going to do that at the expense of shedding populations from 2 and 4. And so that is literally the task. And now I'm going to ask Drew to list the questions. Can I ask any questions? I'm going to ask Drew to show us Plan A, which is the first of the two example plans we've already sent you. I should say, Councilwoman Swanger, yes?
Yes.
Big Swan. Swan, is that how you say it? Gave me a plan to input last week. We did so. It was very slightly out of balance. We did a couple of tweaks to put it back in balance, and I'm going to show you that as the third example plan. You'll notice when we see them, there are some similarities in each of them, or common elements of the redrawing. And that's a function of both the fact that we have the same task to do in each of the maps, and also a function of the fairly constrained ability to move things around that we have, as the election precincts are what they are. So, what you are looking at, the colors are the new proposed districts in this plan, and the red lines are the existing boundaries of your current district. So, anytime you see a color leading across one of those big bold red lines, that's an area that has been changed in this proposed plan. So, for instance, at the top district, 3, that little orange or yellow area that was in 4 in this plan has been moved to 3 to give it some population and shed some from 4. By the same token, if you look at District 1, you will see that it has obtained an area in its north central part from District 2, and that has the function both of adding people to District 1 and shedding people from District 2. And finally, District 5 acquired some of former District 3's territory to bring its population up. And what you can deduce from that is that the two areas that were added to District 3 combined in population to add more people than District 3 needed, and then District 3 had to give people to 5. The reason we had to do something like that is because 5 doesn't touch anybody else that needed to shed. So, 1 has shed in the same fashion, some to 5, but not as many people as it got added by that little area that it obtained from District 2. And that makes sense, because the population concentration is higher toward the center of the map. What's the percentage in this map right here, A, to get close to the bounds of 22,000 and plus? The deviation of this plan is 6.
6.33.
I should say that getting below 10 percent is all legally you need to do. You don't get extra credit for really getting all the districts down. Can you go back to the slide where we're seeing the map? Okay, so, up there on 3, it touches 4. Is that 57th Street coming down Dixie to, which would be, is that Midnight?
Midnight.
Are we coming off 57th Street, or is it another smaller? This is straight north on 3 and 4. It's taken off there a little farther. 3 is going into 4. I was just wondering, the east and west on top of that, which is, I've never been able to figure that, 57th Street or?
56, maybe.
Something.
56.
56.
Yeah.
Okay, so what about on the lower, the southwest portion of 3, where 5 is going into 3? The east and west, is that 8th Street?
That's what I was trying to say.
8th Street going to?
No. What are you talking about? The north part is 23rd.
23rd Street.
Goldr. It's Goldr.
To?
Goldr. On Goldr now.
No.
Keeps on going.
No, that's not, that's not 8th.
It goes from down, it goes south on Goldr, and then it goes west a bit on, it's a smaller of the dental street, looks like. Then it comes back down to?
Would it be Dotson?
Possibly.
I couldn't.
It goes down north, and then it cuts in here, and then it goes back south on?
In the map set that we sent you, there are close-ups, if you will, of each of the districts separately. And those have street name labels.
Yeah, I have them if anybody wants to.
Okay, so let me ask, so in District 5 to 1, so we're going from Clemence and Crane? Clemence and Crane going west to West County, and Crane, I'm sorry. Crane and Clemence goes west to West County, and Clemence down south to the interstate and West County interstate back to the east to Crane Street? So, we're going to take from Crane Street to West County, south to Clemence, north to the interstate into 4?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm going to have to break for my dad, he's going to be in District 5.
But tell him he'll love his representative. True. Go on, streets and hills. Yeah, this is Crane.
So, this is Crane. So, while they're looking at that, see, that's an interesting question. It's not in District 2, so why should draw District 2 where there's no residential at all? Why do you include that? So, it makes no sense. That district goes south there?
Districts have to include the entire city.
I'm sorry?
The districts have to include the entire city.
You're going to? Districts have city limits, doesn't it? Crane, I'm sorry, Street. That's just because of the city limits, doesn't it? Really?
District 5 will now?
Really?
Well, these are the city limits we got from you, you versus the city.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that, I don't understand. So, even though there's no residential, there's nobody living there. Road, road tracks, and highways.
Still have to include the district area, because it's got to include the park.
Well, then why don't you include everything north of Parks Belt? Above the red line up there, there's Parks Belts. Up there, I don't see that it's in. Yukon Road there is. I'm not sure if Yukon, if that, what about this piece?
Where's what?
This piece.
Lasting mill.
That right there is.
That's county. That's county.
No, but there's, how do you go? Right up over? That's in the city. Maryland, it's part of Maryland.
It keeps going, and it looks like maps.
That's where they're working right now. That's where VR works, working right now, right here. It's a little slow there. We're just taking, we're taking the district map as it is, that it was 10 years ago, and that's what we're working with, not what has already been planted in and brought into the city.
If you have annexes since the last time, we asked for current city map, and that's what we're working with. So, I'm assuming that we got total city limits with all of the annexations that may occur.
Here's a question. Here's the city limits. Look, this has no population in here with that city limits. So, it's included in my district. Here's Parks Belt. New destructions right there.
No, actually, the construction is right here, right off of Yukon.
So, it's on the other side of Yukon.
Yeah, it's right here. Look, this is the map.
Oh, that's what I wanted to say. That makes it more.
So, you're already in.
This, because this has nothing, and I know that's going to have a bunch, so I wanted to include that, because it's inside the city limits, is what he was saying. So, that ought to be included, that's all.
I think you can think of it this way. If in 10 years, people have?
Or it'll happen with the 8s, 2s, 3s.
What the district reflects.
Yeah, this is a good map here. Okay. Thank you, Michael.
Yes, sir. Ready to see P?
Yeah.
Sure.
As before, the red lines are the current districts, and anytime you see a color cross over the red lines, that's an area that has been changed. So, for District 3, there is a fairly large area that was taken from District 4 to add population to District 3, and an area
An area of the sort of west central part of District Three that was moved to District Five to give it some population. District Two gave up population to District Four and got some back from District Four. And that trade, coupled with District Two giving population to District One, puts the plan in balance.
That's wild. So when One went north and east, Two went south. Gotcha. Two zig and lines here. This is not as clean as A right here, B.
Yeah, but A was better than this.
This is B, we're looking at?
This is B right here.
This is B.
Where's A?
E, E, A was the previous one that we're looking at.
Yeah, no, five, yeah.
Where's A? This is very?
That's Two, but this is A.
Dairy Queen and all of that.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I got the, uh, is it? Is it? Cross from?
What's the deviation on Plan, on Plan B?
Nine point six eight.
What is this, this?
Nine point six eight.
On B is nine point six eight.
B's got too many zig and lines.
Yes, it splits it out too much.
Can we look at mine, please?
Make sure to have it in my, I can't see your license.
Well, here you go.
It's all about her?
It's all about lines, I'm just trying to make it clean.
You got towels, I didn't know you had, you've got towels. This is where she has the pink Tetris.
It's A, maybe A, I'm not sure. I just told him I thought, so he, he did the numbers, not us.
Okay, what he did here was take Councilwoman's plan, which was at ninety-seven percent total deviation.
Do you want, I'm sorry?
Make a couple of minor changes to it to try to get into population balance.
And what's the deviation on this one?
It was like, I thought you said six point seven, didn't it?
Pretty close to six point three three.
Drew, what's the deviation on this plan?
Six point one oh.
Wow, six point ten percent.
That's pretty good, Drew.
Correct, please.
We should have hired you.
Well, I've sat through all the counting.
They should shout me up.
No, you actually, you, you got bigger.
You get bigger from One.
Because you actually go, now, you're going all the way down to Grand Street.
The interstate, so we're gonna be split downtown.
You're, so basically, you wind up going from Crane Street, you go all the way down to?
The Toshes, I mean, this was kinda?
You get bigger.
Or to the interstate.
So what you do is you wind up getting more of One to the southwest, but One grows up, the same as to the Two, but goes up, uh, which would be at University and Forty-second Street. So this is University. So this is Forty-second right here. And it's the Two.
Now, this is, this is?
So, so, so basically, this is? So this is about Five, this is Crane. This is Crane. You know, this is, this is Crane. Because this, this was a, it encompasses more. From the A with, to the interstate, to West County. So basically, so if you wanted to be on this? Yeah, yeah. About balance.
No, I'm, I'm?
But Thomas is gonna grow pretty fast, too? Yeah.
I'd rather go with a lower deviation, that is gonna help us out in the next, in the future, ten year.
Well, if, if, if we do the six point one, you know, it's a little, because then we're gonna wind up seeing Four for, within two, three years, we're gonna have two thousand, thousand seventy.
So in ten years?
Yeah. Four had two. Four and two. This one right here, this, this one right here, we're already working on. Yeah, yeah. And then this one right here's already in construction. Yeah, I'd rather go with lower. That's very good. Give her a gold star.
She's a hard girl.
Six point one zero. Like, good job, you did good. Give her a gold star.
Thank you.
Four taxes. So the thing is, is that, that in, 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 in the newsletter, it says Swatter comes up with a redistricting plan. You got a problem, call her.
Hey, I'm that large, y'all can honestly say I'm representing all of you. Not just one of you.
There you go.
I'm representing all of you.
I like it. I like it, I like it, it's good. Well, there you go. I like it, I like it, I like this. Give her, leave her everybody her phone number, she's gonna drive it. Don't like the red listing, call your Auntie Margaret.
Six point?
We'll make one comment about the difference between Plan A and Plan One or Two.
She's gonna be Plan D for the base.
District One, which is currently at sixty-six percent total population of Hispanic. And Plan A becomes sixty point six five percent, so it goes down about six percent because you have to add a lot of people. Uh, and then the plan you're looking at now, it goes down further to just below fifty-five percent.
So it's more?
It's more equal.
So the Hispanic percentage from District One is reduced by the Councilwoman's plan, uh, another six percentage points from the six percentage points that Plan A reduced it. The result is that the other two Hispanic districts are both slightly slower in her plan.
Which, which other two?
Sorry?
Which other two districts? What is, what is the deviation on District Five?
Three and Five.
Three and Five. What is Hispanic population on District Five under Plan Swatter?
Uh, it's seventy-seven point eight three compared to Plan A at seventy-five point one one compared to the initial assessment of seventy-six point five three. So there's always a trade-off when you move.
Yeah.
Now, you gotta take, it takes our attention to those percentages in the charts.
What's the, what's the? We're not creating a super?
What's the percentage of black in District Five and One? Her plan?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Total population, I'm not, we can go at the bone age if you like. The total population is nine point five four in the Councilwoman's plan, nine point three four in Plan A, and it was in your current districts, eleven percent.
Which population?
How about in Five? Sorry? In District Five, the black population on that one?
In her plan, it's four point four five. In the Plan A, it's four point seven oh. And it's three point nine eight in the current district, so both of these things increase in slight ways.
All right, it's clean?
I apologize, but in, in Swatter's proposed plan, how does the demographic break down again for District Three?
Uh, sixty-five point four eight percent Hispanic total population. Uh, African-American, four point six six.
I got all of you, you can ask them.
How four?
Oh, Mark, you're District Four.
Now, the plan you're looking at there is sort of original plan, it's not the one that's on this.
Right, so we had to make adjustments if y'all were that?
Right now, it's thirty-four point seven. What's, what's the Hispanic population in District Two under Swatter's plan?
Percentage?
Yes, sir.
Thirty-four point forty-one. And then Plan A is thirty-four point one seven, so?
What do you think it is?
Seven hundred and two.
Where were you asking?
So I go, so in my, it's one of the, yeah. Tom, you're, you're?
Can we get that, that graph? I know that you're giving them the numbers and everything, and it's here, but Legal is asking for me to get that.
Yes, they are. Yeah.
If my GPS person emailed you to this?
No, I understand. Oh, yes, sir. We were just talking about it, everybody was in agreement, we could submit it on the work session Tuesday, kind of in process.
So were you north of Cambridge or something?
No.
I've been done, you're still on the board.
So, so in the, in Denise, Denise, in, in, in your plan right there, in District Three, it extends all the way to Grandview? So the southern border, the southern line that's running east and west is University? Yes. Okay? This one? Yeah, and so it goes all the way to Grandview, north to Grandview to Forty-second, Forty-second back, west to? Is it, is that Dixie? Or like, not, Dixie?
No, it's Dixie.
Okay, and Dixie all the way back, yeah. So your plan would be all?
Sorry, I don't. Wait a minute.
Okay.
I don't, I don't mind, but this is the exact one. You know, this was the one that I sent to him, and then he did his.
Plan B.
He has it on email if you wanna?
He has it back there, yes.
Well, then I'd like the one there.
Yeah, he, we need to get, because this is my doodle.
You're, you're not, you're cheating.
Yeah, my cheat sheet, so he has the actual lines that?
Yeah, I like that, too.
Uh, let's see. Oh, wait, wait, it's Forty-second, and this is Grandview.
Mayor of City Council, I think we've gotten a lot farther than I even anticipated getting today. It looks like it's between Plan A and then Councilwoman Swatter's plan. So what I was thinking is what we could do is get all the information with the demographics and the maps, and then we could bring this to actual work session next week if we needed to vote on it. It's just an idea.
Okay, so, uh, yeah.
I'm gonna give y'all time to look, whatever we're getting on.
She was all waiting, yeah, yeah. Sounds good, sounds good, class.
Is, is there a required public input on the map?
No, the law does not itself require any public input, but we strongly advise it.
We can request a public input, right?
Uh, and there are a couple of ways to do it. You can have a period of time where people can submit written comments to somebody lucky.
Yeah.
Or, or what more typically happens is at least one public hearing where people can come and tell you what they think about the process and or about a particular map that you proposed. What we typically have suggested other governing bodies do is pick one or more of the plans that we've, we've provided and or they've drawn and designate them as proposed plans for comment. You've not adopted anything yet, you get public input. If there's input that you think you need to pay attention to and make changes, we have a drawing session with you and make the changes and produce a plan presumably that we're going to adopt. I digress a little bit. Uh, we are prepared today, if you are interested, to open one of these plans in our redistricting software and display on the screen in a getaway where we can actually move lines around. And there's a table underneath that doesn't appear on these pictures that shows immediately the changes in population and demographics whenever you move a line. So live drawing is possible now or at another session in the future.
So Council, are, uh, what, your thought process on A and Plan D? I mean, I'm pretty happy with, with, with both of going forward with it and then getting public input and saying this is what we're proposing, we've got two, two plans, and get public input on that.
We definitely want the public input, you know, so that we could hear them and give them a chance to, to see it and, and speak before we, so I don't know where that falls in the workshop.
Can we do it on the work session? Yes, we can.
Even if we're not prepared to vote?
Right, we can, we can do a public comment on, on the work session.
And so the thing is, we're going with both Plan A?
Oh, wait, 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 do a public, on, on the work session, we wouldn't have a, a specific public opportunity away from the work session?
Yes, we could do that too, if you wanna have a special meeting. Yes, just like today, we could schedule.
Yeah, yeah.
We could.
Nobody showed up. I don't think nobody, I don't think people knew that, I mean, everybody knows redistrict and redistrict and redistrict and hear a lot about it, but I don't think people knew exactly what was happening with the, with the, with this meeting, so maybe nobody, maybe nobody would show up next time, I don't know, but?
Well, we can, we can set, we can set a special public hearing for, uh, you know, input on, on Plan A. The, first of all, do we have a consensus for Plan A taking?
Well?
Okay, so then the other one is? Do we have the special?
Plan A and?
Plan A, Plan? We're calling it Plan D for Denise.
Plan D for Denise.
We're calling it Plan D for Denise.
Okay.
Okay? That way we're not, you, you don't have to, nobody has to.
Actually, ABC doesn't own Plan D, so.
That's a nice thing about D.
Yeah, I've made a D most of my life, so that's perfect.
So the other is, is, so we have consensus on both plans, do we, now the thing is, is do we want to use the work session and want to set a special?
Councilmember White, you, you will not be here?
I'm gonna be here next Tuesday.
Okay.
And, uh, but?
Well, here's another thought, do we have, is there like a, a time travel that we need to be on? Because I know there's a?
I should have said that earlier, you have a November election, so you must adopt a new plan by July twenty-second.
And, and, and the committee, you and Michael and our attorney and our goal is set like the middle of gym, so we weren't pushing it. I think that's reasonable.
I think, I think we're still in line with that, wouldn't you?
We're April now, so.
I mean, we're in May basically now.
Some days in May.
Yeah. I don't think it's a reason to set your deadline around the beginning of August. Yeah, above than six percent.
Yeah, just FYI packets, candidate starts asking and inquiring about packets, and they do ahead of time, um, June? Yes.
Yes, for, for, yeah, and the thing is, we need to have these lines pretty much adjourned and drawn, yeah, yeah.
The reason, the reason you have a July twenty-second deadline, if I've got that date right, is the next day is the first day a candidate sign up.
Correct, a lot of candidates like to be there.
I understand, that's just true drop dead.
Um, if, if you guys, and it's entirely up to y'all, if y'all wanted to have this, you know, the public discussion on this next Tuesday, I have no problem with that. I can touch base with you guys, McGorma, and find out if there were any specific concerns for District Three. And I, I, I have no problem with that. I guess my only concern is, is making sure we get it publicized, you know, that, that community input is important, and that the lines possibly could be changed, I mean, that has to be said. Otherwise, it's not gonna really trigger anybody's interest, it's just a little city council meeting, but? Actually, the lines are gonna be changed. Well, that's what I'm saying, they need to know that. I mean, that needs to be a part of our, not advertising. Notice, yeah.
So we'll go ahead and, we'll set it, we'll set it for the, for the work session. And we'll, and we'll, and we're, uh, these are the two proposed plans. And so can we send out a press release that these are proposals and that we are publicly invited for public input?
That the lines are being redrawn?
Yes.
Yes.
And for the redistricting, and these are proposed, the, the two proposed plans. And for the redistricting, and these are proposed, the, the two proposed plans that we, we want public input on. And so these are not written stunt as of yet.
One thing to keep in mind, because people get very confused about what you're drawing, what the effect of drawing districts is. It's only election districts. It does not affect the provision of city services of any kind. We're doing San Antonio, huge amount of confusion about if you move that police station out of my district, how will I get police coverage? And so we say early and often, it does not affect any city services, not your emergency services, not your water, and so on, it's probably worth it.
It's okay, we're already servicing outside our service area.
Sid, would you be able to, on, on the proposed, on Denise's proposed plan, to send us that demographic breakdown?
Yes, I actually, that's what I was looking at on my phone. I got it this morning, not enough time to get it to you.
Excellent, thank you.
Hand her a map.
And, yes.
Please.
And we're gonna keep her map a secret, you can hand her the graphic.
Not the map.
Well, I have to give him credit there because I just played with it and then he made it happen.
Yeah, it's not my calling, it's the artist. So, uh, any other questions, any other comments? Sir, do you have anything else you wanna add?
Uh, nothing I can think of.
All right, perfect. Well, sounds good.
Um, the next day you'll be here, I understand, is May ninth, is that correct? I mean, for the other entities?
I have tentatively penciled in, uh, them in the afternoon. I'm assuming that Midland will have adopted by then.
He's gonna be here May ninth for the other entities?
Otherwise supposed to be there in the morning, but I could be here in the afternoon, and if, if Midland has adopted in the drawing session we had tentatively planned, we'll go away, I could be here in the morning as well.
I think if everybody could look at their calendars and, and we could come up with a date for May ninth morning, and I think that would work perfect because we have a council meeting that next day, and so.
Sorry, you're saying not to have this discussion on the third?
Yeah, we need to have that discussion and then another one.
And then another one.
Okay.
May ninth?
Yes. That's what I was saying. It's another. So I've accepted, I'll take a time, a lifetime, I say.
Ten o'clock.
May ninth being a Monday?
Yes.
Yes, I.
Ten, ten AM?
Does ten AM work for you?
Well, ten AM, that's the pencil then for good one.
That's it.
But if it goes.
If it goes well, he can.
And otherwise, I could do it at one.
Okay, otherwise, one.
Okay.
Okay. One or two.
So tentatively, ten AM, and.
One o'clock after?
Yeah, one, one AM, that, okay.
One o'clock works for me.
Just do one o'clock, that way you don't have to worry about.
You'll be here.
No, I want it to get more complicated. No, that's, that's a bug, I'm sorry. Yeah, I, I can't be in your way.
That's good.
No, one works good, it's our little division.
So we'll get these, I have a paper here, and I've been studying. Let's tell you, it looks like. People painted all of them to a bank of Saturday head of. I already got it there, I just think that the man, you know. Yeah, exactly, and now we can see the strickles.
We need to, no more business before the city councils, we are adjourned.